All right, we're gonna call this meeting to order at six o'clock. Can I get everyone to rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, do we have any changes to the agenda?
Uh, no changes, Mayor.
Okay, we're gonna move on to council's approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as read.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Aye. Motion passes. All right, we're gonna move on to item number two, awards, presentations, appointments, and proclamations. Presentation from the Alyssa, is that how you say that?
Alyssa.
Alyssa. Alyssa Ann Roush Burn Foundation to the Kalinga Fire Department as the Prevention Community Partner of the Year.
Yeah, I'm gonna introduce Katrina Arthur. She's the operations manager for that association, and she's gonna take it from here.
Thank you distinguished members of the Kalinga City Council. My name is Katrina Arthur, and I am the operations manager for the Alyssa Ann Roush Burn Foundation. We are a statewide burn foundation that provides essential services and burn prevention education across the state in partners with community groups and fire departments. For the past two years, we have had the honor of being partners with the Kalinga Fire Department through our holiday party toy drive, which benefits Central Valley burn survivors and their families, through our Central Valley Firefighters Burn Relay, which travels across the Central Valley, bringing acknowledgement, recognition to our firefighters partners. And this year, we are furthering that partnership with the fire department in our move to increase prevention education, specifically in wildfire preparedness. And we are very excited for the upcoming prospect of sharing our wildfire prepare program with the city of Kalinga through the assistance with the fire department. And so it is my pleasure to present the Volunteer Appreciation Award in Burn Prevention to the Kalinga Fire Department.
Thank you. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Counsel, have any questions? Yeah.
Um, so, our mission is to provide, the first one is to provide essential services for burn survivors across the state. And what that means is that we partner with six hospitals across the state who have zero one burn units, including CRZ here in the Central Valley. Um, and we are there from injury date until end of life, end of relationship, providing one-on-one care support, financial support. And then we offer to caregivers, survivors, burn care professionals, support groups as well. And then our second problem is prevention education. And that means that we partner specifically with fire departments in producing a FIES program, firefighters and safety education. And that is getting firefighters into school, providing burn prevention and providing prevention education to kids, keepers.
That's great. I'm actually a Shryna burn unit survivor.
Okay.
Utah. Yeah, they actually flew me there. I was six years old when I had third degree burns on both of my legs. So, it's, thank you, thank you.
Go ahead, Tom.
Would you please inform everyone here with about a paragraph story of just who in the heck Alyssa Ann is?
I can. So Alyssa Ann is a young lady who, at eight years old in nineteen seventy-one, unfortunately in love with her brother, fell into a bed. Um, she, unlike her brother, was not super familiar with stop, drop, and roll, and unfortunately ran to go find her parents, and then eventually succumbed to her injuries. So if you know stop, drop, and roll, I could do a quick poll and everyone's hands can go up. If you actually know the burn prevention, you know the Alyssa Ann prevention. We have been participating and serving the state of California in the last fifty-two years. And our main goal was to make sure that everybody knew about stop, drop, and roll. What happened to your clothes light on fire? What is it you can do so that we could prevent deaths like in the van? And from that, her parents' partnership with her local fire department and their religious organization built the foundation starting in Southern California, and then now has spread across the state.
Any other questions? Thank you so much for coming, and thanks to the Kalinga Fire Department as well. Great partnership, appreciate it. All right, we're gonna move on to item number two point two, city department updates.
All right, I'm gonna go first. So staffing, on the fire division, we are down three firefighter paramedic positions. However, we have two non-safeties being promoted that have completed backgrounds and will be promoted on April twenty-first. And then we tested three weeks ago and selected an individual who is in the background process right now. So we will have all of our fire division positions filled shortly. On the non-safety side, we just completed EMT testing this week. We had thirty-one applications. Twenty-four showed up, and eighteen to nineteen of them are moving on. And then next Tuesday, we are going to be testing the paramedics. So that's the staffing. I just wanna give council a quick update on some apparatus at a service. Unfortunately, they're all ambulances. Kind of coincides with one of the items on the consent calendar. But two-five-two and two-five-five needed a new transmission and engine. They actually came in a lot sooner than anticipated and are in the shop right now. So we hope to get those back in about two to three weeks. Once those engines, once we get one of those back, then another ambulance has to go into the shop for a repair. And that's gonna be down for some while as well. So just wanna give a quick update on that. Some events we have coming up, we are, this Saturday, we, from nine AM to twelve, we are gonna be at the Child Development Center for Week of the Young Child. We're gonna do a static display and have the firefighters out there showing off the engine and equipment. And then right after that, they're going over to the Parks and Rec, Keck Park, from one to three to do the autism awareness walk. So that's what's going on for us. And then we have been participating with an ambulance standby at all of the Kalinga rodeo events. I think we've done six or seven so far, and then three more next week. And then just one thing real quick, I'm gonna go into more detail about this with my first quarter report next meeting, but we got our ISO rating update back, and I'll explain what ISO is and all that good stuff. But it's basically, departments are rated from one to ten on their ISO. And we've been a three for years. In order to get to that next step, we needed to have eighty points. We got seventy-nine point three-three. We are point-six-seven away from being a class-two department, which would be incredible for Kalinga. I emailed the individual that was our liaison, and he's gonna give me some things that he saw that maybe we can address and fix, and then we can readdress it and not wait another five years to do ISO, and maybe we can get that class-two sooner. So I'll, but, but next meeting, I have a full kind of breakdown of ISO and all of our points and stuff, and we'll go into a little more detail then. But I thought that was right there, so I thought that was pretty important to let you guys know about. And so I'll be happy to take any questions, or I'll pass it on to Sean.
Any questions from council? Seeing none.
All right.
All right, I'll start with staffing as well. We just closed up our corporal application period. That closed yesterday. We did get three applicants for that, so we'll be hopefully interviewing them shortly, hoping to fill some spots. Once that's done, we will go on to fill any other vacancies we have, any officer applicants we have, and I think we've got four of those, five of those. Unfortunately, we can't put up the number Greg's putting up, which would be nice. Animal Control is back. He came back today, so he's back full-time, cleared from his injury. And then as far as events, we'll be with the fire department at the Week of the Young Child event at the college and the autism awareness walk on the Saturday. We've been hosting the Coffee with the Cop on a regular basis. We finished up last week at the New Life Tabernacle. On the twenty-seventh, the Kalinga Women's Club will be hosting our next one. We're gonna call that one Coffee with the First Responder though, so it'll be us, fire, and public works out there, just trying to get more of the community involvement, get us out there some more. That'll be at one o'clock, right? Yeah, one o'clock. Other than that, that's all we've got on our side.
Any questions from council? No, seeing none. I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
And Maya's currently still trying to print out some of the budget items right now. So that's what's primarily been probably in her world over the last week. So if we have any other updates from her, she'll be here soon.
All right, so closing out department updates, we'll move on to item number three, citizens' comments. This section of the agenda allows members of the public to address the city council on any item within the jurisdiction of the council. Members of the public, when recognized by the mayor, should come forward to the lectern, identify themselves, and use the microphone. Comments are normally limited to three minutes. In accordance with state open meeting laws, no action will be taken by the city council this evening, and all items will be referred to staff for follow-up and report. Citizen comments submitted in writing to the city clerk by five PM on the day of the city council meeting shall be distributed to the city council and included in the record. However, they will not be read. Do I have any members of the public who would like to make a citizen's comment? Okay, seeing none. We're gonna move on to number four, which is public hearings, which we have none. We're gonna move on to item number five, which is the consent calendar. City clerk, do we have any comment cards?
We do, from Tanya Stevens for five point one-one.
Okay, so that one will be, we'll pull that one. And then are there any items from council they would like to pull?
Five-five, but I think you've already got that noted.
Okay. So I don't, we'll pull five-five. I would also like to pull five-seven and five-twelve as well. So we'll go ahead and start with five-five. The informational-only transient occupancy tax quarter ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
You guys have specific questions or comments regarding that?
I do. It looks, it appears like we have some hotels not paying any taxes.
Yes.
What are we doing about that?
We're actually in the process and looking at, like basically an audit process for these particular locations. We've been in conversations with our auditors as well as other firms that will provide these services. It's also something we could potentially do in-house, and so we've been talking internally about some of the controls, something that we talked about on Saturday, last Saturday, about some of the internal controls of the finance department, that there are, we are gonna be assigning folks to be looking at this and getting into these businesses and talk to them, and making sure there's proper procedures in place to make sure they're reporting accurately.
Thanks.
Any other comments or questions from council on that item? No? Okay. Gonna move on to item number five-seven, informational-only proposed electronic sign street view. And that was, I wanna pull that for the public benefit of understanding what this is, how much it'll cost, things of that nature.
Yeah, so at the last meeting, council requested that staff bring back kind of a street view of kind of what it would look like. So we had the sign company put that together. This is to install a new electronic sign below the archway sign that's in downtown as a replacement of the previous sign that we had. The quote that came in is about a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for install. And as part of the budget process, because of how we're gonna be doing the budget process, this go-around with one-time projects, this will be identified as a one-time project in the grand scheme of all the other projects that we have identified. So that'll be bringing, we decided we'll bring that back at the budget time and then address that when, to see how we can fit it into the overall budget.
Okay, do you have a preliminary idea of what it might cost by chance?
Hundred and fifteen thousand.
All right. Any other questions or comments on item five dot seven?
I do.
Yes.
I have one quick question. Is the power that's applied to those, is that enough power to run that board?
Yeah.
Go in both directions?
Yeah, they should be able to. They're all LEDs, so they use a lot less power than what's typical. So yeah, they don't require, they should be able to handle that additional power. Yeah. But it is nearby if there is any additional needed, but we're not anticipating it.
Any other questions?
Yeah, on the, on the safety note, any vehicles, you know, I know it's, you know, low-rising vehicles are close to the yard.
Yeah, so this is actually, this will end up being above where the, where usually the banner goes. It's still gonna be above even the lower part of the, where the banner's at. So it'll have plenty of clearance.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions or comments? No, seeing none. Gonna move on to number five dot eleven. And since we have a comment card, I'm gonna open this up to Tanya Stevens, if you can come up to the microphone.
Good evening, council and mayor. I'm Tanya Stevens, from the state of Kalinga. And I just had a concern about this item. It was brought to my attention, and I guess I missed it because I looked at the agenda, and I saw that we were looking at a firm and gonna pay twenty-five thousand dollars to have this firm potentially look at applicants when we already have applicants here doing an internal job. Like, why aren't we hiring internally? We've looked at outside people several times before. We're gonna hire somebody from out of Kalinga that's not gonna live here, that's not gonna pay taxes, that's not gonna give back to the community, that's not gonna do their part, that, and maybe even if it's not Sean, but look at somebody else internally first before we pay twenty-five thousand dollars. Use the money for the police force or for the fire department or for any love. Twenty-five thousand dollars may not be a lot to the city's general fund, but for each of these, it's a huge amount of money. And I feel like we need to take that into consideration. I've been in business here for, what, twenty-one years? And I've seen some sloppy city managers come in here. We end up getting them, we hire them from out of the area, and then they end up getting let go, and then we still pay them their income, and then we have to hire somebody else. So we're gonna be putting out this job application with this firm. What if Sean, who's been doing two jobs, decides, oh, I'm gonna go apply for city manager somewhere else? Then who's gonna be doing the economic development job or the whatever he's been doing, city manager, assistant city manager? I don't even know what he does. I mean, I know he does a lot, but who's gonna take this on? It's gonna take six months or more to train them to even know where Sean is. And I get, like, Marissa is, she has big shoes to fill. Like, it's hard, in my opinion, to fill those shoes. She was great at what she did, but she wasn't always top-notch. She worked her way up, and it's a learning curve, and everybody has to have a chance to learn the position that they're put in or that they, they hired into or apply for. So I just wanted to come here tonight as a business owner and just say, in my opinion, I feel like Sean's done a good job. I don't know everything that he does, but before we spend twenty-five thousand dollars and hire a firm to look at applicants, why can't we, as a small city, put out the offer for people to apply even internally? I mean, I think that that's what most businesses do. And then while I'm up here, I have one thing I wanted to say in regards to this also. I know that the city loves having a working work week. I do, I get it. It's just like the school teachers loved not working in classrooms during COVID, you know, when they came back. But it's my opinion as a business owner, like when I close a real estate transaction on a Thursday and it's a three-day weekend, my clients can't get utilities turned on because the city of Kalinga, I don't know where the finance person is, the city of Kalinga requires the new owners to provide a closing statement. They don't get the closing statement until the deal is closed. Sometimes that's, sometimes that's four-thirty or five o'clock in the afternoon. Let's say that's on a Thursday and it's a three-day weekend. They cannot change the utilities into their name until following Tuesday. Think about you guys, if you wanted to get into a home, your new home, and the seller goes like, no, I'm not keeping the utilities on for you. I'm closing it, or I'm closing them out on the day it closes. Then we have, we have no way to have them have utilities in the new home that they're excited about. So my suggestion, while I'm up here, is maybe have a skeleton crew that works on Fridays. Have somebody in the office that can say, hey, we have one guy that can go turn on gas. P G and E does it easily. So maybe not everybody wants to work a weekday shift. I get it. Think about a skeleton crew on Fridays. I think it's beneficial for our community. For me as a business owner, it's beneficial. And so, anyway, I just hope that you guys take this into consideration. I also wanted to come up during consent, because I wanted a little bit of feedback. I wanted to ask you guys, like, why is this, why is this on here? Like, what are you guys thinking?
Counsel? Anyone wanna, wanna add to this? Yeah?
To the first one or second?
Uh, all of them.
Well.
Why is this on here? Like, I get for transparency, but what is council's thought? I get that we need transparency, but also, we as a small community need that twenty-five thousand dollars in other places.
Yeah, and you're right, you're right, Ms. Stevens. You're so right on that. We, as a council and as, as a city of Kalinga, we do wanna be as transparent as we can. And of course, unfortunately, you know, you know, these companies do charge this much. And if we would to just go and hire some, which, which is fine, you know, and he's done a great job. But to the community, you know, we have to be transparent. And we already have, there's not even a position filled yet, and we have people already saying, oh, you know, they're just gonna go with who they know. And just to be transparent, you know, it's, this is one form to, to, to kinda extinguish, extinguish that that everybody gets an opportunity to apply for this.
So why can't we just put out the job opening instead of hiring a firm that is gonna do this? I mean, are you guys ultimately gonna look at? going to do this? I mean, are you guys ultimately going to look at the applicant and make the decision?
Yep. Why don't you let me cover the, the process? Yeah, sure. So just to let the public know, I've probably gone through more city manager hiring processes than anybody in any county around, just because of the volume that happens in the cities, the number of cities that we represent. So what the, what the recruiting firm will do is they sort of take the lead in kind of the, every step of the way. So yeah, they're going to put it out and do advertisements, but that shouldn't preclude, and it doesn't preclude, and I think the council expects Sean to apply. I mean, that's ultimately up to Sean, but I think the council expects that. And so this is not, or anybody else from the city, I mean, they're, they're welcome to, it's a, it's an open recruitment. I do think it's, it's a lot of money. I think it's right in line with what I had initially told the council this was going to cost. I think it was right in the middle. And it's, it's just a process that Coffin Associates will kind of lead everybody through. They may have suggestions, they'll talk to the council about what kind of candidates they want. They'll talk to the candidates and make a recommendation ultimately of who's the right fit. The council will see anything they want. So if you want to see every single resume, they, they will provide it to you. They're going to make you a recommendation, so you don't have to do that if you don't want to, depending on the number of applicants. But they're going to at least screen them for you and, and give you an idea of, you know, who's maybe a top-tier candidate based on their experience, based on, you know, the cities they've been in, who's kind of in the middle group, and who's at the bottom, who's kind of reaching for, you know, a real big promotion that they're, maybe they're not ready for, things like that. So they will provide all that to the council. The council will ultimately decide who the council wants to interview to the next step. And then NAF is going to arrange that with those candidates typically in, it's typically a closed session, but that takes a lot of coordination because the council is not going to have any direct contact before the interview with these candidates. And they shouldn't, just to make sure it's, you know, it's a clean process. Coff will arrange all that, they're going to arrange when these people arrive, when we're going to have the meeting. They'll help facilitate the conversation if council has any questions. They're going to help with the background. So it is, it's a, it's a longer process than just, hey, we're going to put out some ads and see what comes back. So it's, I think it's a, their estimate is a twelve to fourteen-week process. The other recruiter was more expensive and a longer timeframe. So it's, it's a, it's a good chunk of time that they're going to be working with the city, you know, basically three months. The reason why you would want to do this is not necessarily, and I've explained this to Sean, it's not for, to Sean's detriment. I actually, I recommend to council that they do that. It's up to them whether they want to do it. But I think it's a really big benefit to whoever gets the city manager job to go through this process, mostly because the council only hires two people. In the whole city, they only hire two people, the city attorney and the city manager. And so the public has to know that if they're hiring one of those two people, that it was a fair process, it was an open process, it was transparent, and what the council was really thinking. The, where it helps the city manager is not only with the public, because you don't want the public to think, well, there was just some backdoor deal. You also don't want other applicants for other positions, because there's a whole bunch of other positions in the city that aren't going to go through this process. And so you, you don't, you want people to understand when they apply to the city position, whether it's, you know, a public works guy or the city manager, that they're going to have a fair shake, that somebody's already not picked in advance, and they're just not going to do a backdoor deal, because people will stop applying. The other reason you want to do that is because the electeds up here, they change. And the last thing you want is two people coming in at the next election and saying, you know what, Sean's not the best candidate, right? They just picked him, and if he happens to get the job, they just picked him because they knew him, and we think there's a better somebody out there. And so that puts the city manager, whoever it is, in a really tough position, because now you have two people coming in right from the get-go, possibly three, that say, he, he doesn't have the credibility because he didn't go through the process that should have been gone through. So that's the, kind of the reason you want to go through this process. Make sure it's fair, make sure it's transparent. I think transparency, since I got here, transparency's been one of the top issues, one of the top priorities, I would say, for every council that has been up here, transparency about money, about finances, about, you know, bills, about cannabis, and about recruiting. And so I think this is just another thing that really bolsters that. And I think it's, I think it's really important for the council to go through the process, everybody gets a fair shake, and then after it, everybody knows everybody got a fair shake.
I have a question. So do you have to go through a third-party firm, firm, in order to do that? Or can't they just put it out? Because it's the same council that's going to hire the city manager with a third-party firm as, that's going to have hired the manager if you just put it out there for application process?
Yeah, so the reason, it's really just a matter of expertise and manpower. So it's, it's a lot different, you know, in private firms like us, I mean, it's really easy to, to get out and, because everybody's kind of looking on Indeed, for example, right? The, these recruiting services, they're kind of an Indeed for the government sector. So Coff just finished their recruitment maybe a few weeks, probably about a month ago, for the assistant city manager in Tulare. And they, so they know the area. Frank Rojas, the one who's going to be working on this, he was actually born in Kalinka at the hospital. Like, they're really familiar with this area, and they have candidates, they have the people that they've encouraged to apply for other jobs. So they kind of have the network of potential candidates and who would be a good fit, who might not be. And so, and the candidates also know these types of firms, right? So they don't go to Indeed, for example, they go to these firms and saying, hey, I'm, I'm a viable, I think I'm a viable candidate for these types of positions. Having the staff do that is, is just really not, not feasible. They, they don't have that expertise. They could put out the announcement, for sure, but to be able to facilitate everything in addition to what they're already doing, it would be very, very difficult. And, and you would save the money, but I think you wouldn't have the result at the end, which is, we had a third party, yeah, we spent the money, but we have a third party who went through this. It was the best we could do, and we have a great candidate come out of that.
So another question I have, and I apologize, I'm just full of questions. But apparently we need an assistant city manager as well, and we need an economic development director. Those are the positions that we need that are at the top, right? I mean, those are top positions. So when we're spending this $25,000, like, are we only advertising for city manager, or is that including the additional top positions that we need?
It, it will only recruit the city manager, but the cool thing about this process is I've seen multiple times where you get somebody who's not quite ready for that city manager position, but they, like, for example, if it is Sean, there's positions that need to be filled. And so you can have candidates come out of that, that the council has already interviewed, who they, who they know, who might have a skill set to fit one of those other positions. And so you, you're right, those positions might need to be filled, but that's kind of the, the bonus out of this, is that you can't have other candidates that would be a good match. They just were not the best match for the city manager position. And, and you see that a lot with, like I said, with employee or candidates who aren't quite there yet, like, they're trying to get a bump into the city manager type of position, but they, they don't have the experience, right? They are a department head somewhere, you know, they're a department head in Lindsay, for example, right? A smaller city where they're not going to go from a department head to a city manager of a mid-sized city like Kalinka, but they might be good right for planning, or whatever Sean ends up leaving behind if that's the case. So to answer your question, no, there's, there's, it only covers the city manager, but you can get some surprise benefits out of that.
Okay, and then lastly, during this process, who is going to be our city manager?
Still Sean, he'll be interim until...
So he'll be doing the job, and then let's say that you guys choose not to hire Sean, you find somebody else that's fabulous from Lindsay, and then they come in, and then who trains that person to do that job? Out of curiosity.
I don't know that there's anybody who gets trained as a city manager, ever.
I don't know.
Yeah.
I'm on this, I don't know.
Yeah, so, so typically, yeah, so typically, you know, you're looking at the, somebody who's been a department head at least, and they're wanting to go into the next step as a city manager. I mean, other than just, you know, Cal Cities conferences, I don't know that there's any, any training that's going to happen from, from the city. Because they're expected to know, I mean, I think if the council hires somebody, they're expecting them to, basically not...
Nobody's going to know what goes on in, you know, in this, you know, in each individual town. I get that you're going to know what your job is as a city council, I mean, as a city manager. So, anyway, I wanted to voice my opinion, and I appreciate you guys listening and answering my questions, and hopefully it all works out for the city of Kalinka. I just felt like it's a lot of money to spend, and I, and I appreciate your description of what's taking place. And then one other thing I wanted to tell Sean, my mom really enjoyed your guys' presentation at the women's club, and they are, all the women are looking forward to you guys going back and teaching them how to be safe. So, thank you.
Hey, thanks, Tanya, appreciate the questions.
Thank you so much, and I appreciate public participation like that. That's perfect. There's nothing really left for me to say, because, you know, the city attorney pretty much has led us down this path, I believe, and I, I believe that a lot of it is exactly. The only point that I do want to make is that the council only, as you stated, hires the city manager and the city attorney, so all those rest of the positions that you had stated would be hired by the incoming city manager. And from what I understand, if Sean is not the candidate, he would go back to his assistant city manager position, because there are, you know, things of that nature. But I appreciate you bringing up all the questions and the concerns that you have, because that's important for us to, to hear. Any other questions or comments from council before we move on? All right. Okay, item number five dot twelve is authorized purchase of Kubota tractor to maintain city-owned lots, medians, and airport.
You had a question on that, Mayor?
Yeah. So more like kind of a comment. So this right here is something that kind of like broke down like mid-year, something that we need to, to replace?
Yeah, it's just as things, as things happen, similar to the, you know, the item with the ambulance as well. Yeah, it broke down, we're trying to keep the, keep up the airport, focus on making sure the airport's clean, as well as we use it on other areas besides just the airport, the tractor itself. And so, looking at the opportunity, we need it now rather than later, because we're actually having to rent a tractor at, you know, 1,500 bucks a week, so it starts becoming expensive to do that. And so we just felt it was necessary to do it now. We have the, the funds available to do it within all the funds. And so we're just recommending that we, we move forward with it now.
So this wasn't something that could have been pre-planned ahead of time? This was something, because I know in budget discussions and whatnot, we're going to talk about like making plans for items and whatnot, but this wasn't something, this was something that is actually needed like soon, because we're spending money and renting a tractor?
Yeah, and it was, it's been discussed, but we knew that, you know, because the previous one was operating, but now that it's not, I mean, it's actually in this proposed fiscal year 26 budget. However, with it being down and trying to get out there, keep the weeds down, and utilize the tractor and other resources, we, we recommended moving forward with it now.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on five dot twelve?
Is this going to be a one-time cost, or are you going to try to do it on payments?
It's a one-time cost.
Is this still the sale price from the Kubota sale a couple weeks ago?
Okay, so, funny story is, actually, that's what triggered me to think about, because they had mentioned that it went down. And I, I actually sent a message to Eric asking him, hey, I saw they're having their orange sale, can we get a better deal on it now rather than put it in the budget? Well, I come to find out, Sourcewell actually has better pricing than even their, their pricing when we called the rep. So as you can see from the quote, I think Sourcewell Contracting's like $12,000 off the price, where I think that she said that the savings off of just their orange sale that they have for consumers is a lot, is not as big. So I can, with full transparency, we're not, we're not getting a better deal because we're doing it now because of the orange sale, but we just felt it was necessary to move forward on it.
I'd like to see the discount, that's good.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none. All right, can I get a, entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar with all the items?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar as read.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
I also would aye. All those opposed? Consent calendar passes. Moving on to item number six point one, under ordinance, presentation, discussion, and potential action items, fiscal year 25, 26 budget discussion.
Thank you. Mayor and council, this is the first kind of discussion, kind of review of the proposed fiscal 26 budget. We, we don't have a lot of excruciating detail for you at the moment, we're in April, but as I've kind of mentioned in the past, and kind of how my plan was to develop the budget for fiscal year 26, was to really look at what our, kind of our bare bones approach looks like in terms of revenues and operations, and then we also, and then look at and extrapolate our one-time projects, is what we're calling them. So we've been working diligently on trying to, working with departments on developing up, what is our basic, our basic operational costs per department, what are our revenues, and then also identify things that typically show up in a budget that are like one-time projects, kind of forward-thinking. So we do have kind of a breakdown, I think the most recent paper that you just got kind of gives a breakdown, and I'll give you some highlights on some of the projects. But to be frankly honest, we, there's a lot going on, on the workbooks that my, and I have been working on, and trying to develop and get a level of detail for you guys to kind of see everything. And, and then I'm also going to kind of go through what our plan is for our next meeting, to kind of see where we're moving forward on the budget. My may have some comments as well, but, she's getting up. But we'll, we'll kind of go through what to expect in our next meeting, and then also we're, we're kind of fine-tuning the personnel side of the budget. We've kind of restructured how our approach to budgeting for personnel, and basically what we've utilized in the past. We're trying to organize a little bit more to, for our projections for our personnel and all accounts. So basically, I wanted to focus on five accounts today, just to kind of look at a quick overview, and kind of what we're kind of, what we're kind of explaining. And so you can see in the general fund, we have a beginning fund balance of 5.6 million dollars, this I think I brought up at mid-year, where this is basically carried over cash flow over previous fiscal years, where this is starting available funds in the general fund, moving into fiscal year 25, which would have been July 1st of last year. As we look at the projections, the preliminary projections, and I, I promise you, these numbers are going to change, but our goal is to not have them drastically change, but they will change as we refine all the details. Revenue is expected about 11.9, almost 12 million dollars, and our operational and personnel are looking to be about 10, 10,000,631,000. So with that, you can see right now structurally, as we have it today, it's looking positive on the general fund. And then the next one is the one-time project. So these are all the projects that we've been working with and staff. These are, these are a combination of projects that are in the works, projects that are, that have been discussed, that we talked about at the goals, our goal-setting strategic planning session on Saturday, as well as some larger-ticket items that accumulate to this. And I'll explain kind of our plan and our approach to address this, in, in a way to try and still get to a point where we have a balanced general fund budget on paper, essentially, the way it looks. IGT, we can see that we've got a starting fund balance of 3 million, revenue of 3.8, and operation and personnel of about 4 million dollars. So it's slightly over, but that is very close, and that's still being refined in terms of identifying the personnel and identifying all the key operation, operating costs. And then on the enterprise funds, I think on another form that I have, the enterprise funds are almost well-balanced in terms of the revenues to expenses. However, some of them, as we've done in the past, when we've approved previous budgets on the enterprise funds, we usually have special projects that we're undertaking in both the water, gas, and sewer. And I'll kind of highlight a few of those projects that we have in each one of these funds. And you'll see, as we kind of progress through this, that the budgets seem significantly higher, or some are lower. And a lot of that is based on, like, the water fund has a lot of bond funds that are spent. So we'll have five, we have about 5 million left over in bond funds, which is basically going to Derek, but Derek won't be done until probably sometime in July, and final payments won't occur till probably after that. So a lot of that money is still being built into this particular budget. We also have other grants that are tied with our AMI. So we have the meters that are, the smart meters that are being installed, plus we have our turf replacement program that are all built in under the water enterprise as well. So that's what you'll see here. So, that's what you'll see here. Gas enterprise, we have, obviously, we have some one-time projects built into that, those are the anode beds, and then we also have some, we have some valve replacements on the steel lines. We threw everything at it in this first go-around, and then we'll start refining to kind of see what makes sense, because as you can see, we don't want to have ending cash at fifty thousand dollars in the, in the gas fund. So, we'll be looking at that to make sure that when we're refining the personnel side, that will be in better shape. But this is kind of a snapshot as of right now, just to highlight a little bit as we jump back to the general fund, because we will start working on and refining the enterprise funds as we usually do. You know, we have a huge list of other funds, so street funds, special grant funds, all of those will be refined and brought back to the council at our, at our next meeting that we hopefully will have. Sometimes revenues don't necessarily come in right away, or we don't know projected revenues, and so, we're making guestimates or we're making things based on historical projection, or historical numbers. So, to talk about the general fund, to highlight some of the one-time projects, so like the four point four million that we have in projects, some of the big-ticket items, just to take almost three million out of that, is one, the splash pad project. So, splash pad has about one point seven million dollars, that's budgeted for that project. So, and then we also have the engine that was talked about on, at our strategic planning for the fire department, that's in desperate need of a purchase, but we're almost two and a half years out to actually receive the engine, so we have to start planning for that. So, one point seven for the splash pad, one point two for an engine, we've got the repairs to the ambulances of about four hundred and eighty thousand, we have the life pack and cardio monitors at two hundred and ninety-five thousand, then we have the key card updates, the exterior upgrades to the building, as well as the outdoor LED sign that they had spoke about.
Hold on, what was the two hundred and ninety K?
That was for the life pack card monitors.
And what do those do?
Those are the, those are the monitors that the paramedics use, that they put on you, the EKG pads to read your heart rate.
Okay.
Our life pack fifteens are seventeen years old and are non-compliant anymore and out of service and can't be repaired or replaced.
Okay.
And then also with PD, we have a request for purchase of four new vehicles, we have a very, we have an aging vehicle inventory, and this is, this is our chance to try and get ahead of this and start actually building an actual vehicle replacement program.
So, can I ask a question about that? So, does this go in line with the fleet program that we're currently having?
No, so, the fleet program that we have is essentially, we rent, we actually lease vehicles through enterprise. The challenge we've had with enterprise, and Sean maybe elaborate a little bit on this, it's been difficult trying to do actual, the pursuit vehicles with the, under the lease program. We're not able to get those types of vehicles. Some of the admin vehicles, we're able to get through that program, but unfortunately, the pursuit vehicles, and you want to maybe explain a little bit more the challenges with that?
Yeah, we tried ordering before actual police packages, and we end up with regular commercial vehicles. Unfortunately, those cannot be outfitted for our usage, liability reasons and whatnot, they don't have what they need to support, we can do the upgraded braking systems and whatnot. So, the outfitters can't put the equipment that we have or that we need into them. So, we've asked and we've tried to get them, but it's just difficult. Usually, the cost is cheaper to buy them from the suppliers we do get anyway, because we do get better deals on the police packages.
And so, do, would we, would we be replacing currently leased vehicles with these new ones?
It'd be new purchased vehicles replacing older vehicles.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
They also have the radio repeater and receivers, that's eighty thousand dollars, the MDTs and PC upgrades inside the vehicles, a lot of it's all outdated. Then also, some cameras with the pan tilt zooms, seventy thousand. New flooring out of the PD, and that's in conjunction with the flooring quotes that we've received for city hall, so we're going to, there's some locations in PD that still need new flooring, that didn't receive flooring. And then also, the server, there are some server upgrades that we have for seven thousand dollars. At the next meeting, we'll have a full detailed list of all of the one-time projects, but what I wanted to do is explain what our approach is to addressing these. I know it seems like a lot, it's a significant amount of money, in my, my personal opinion, I think it's deferred projects that we, we should be, we should be doing, and we should have done. And so, I think, so what our approach is, is that we have, as we talked at mid-year, we have a sixty-five percent over prescribed reserve fund, which means that we have, we're sixty-five percent over what our reserve policy is in just the general fund reserve, which equates to about one point six million dollars. We also have been receiving, which I think you've maybe heard the fire chief talk about, the GEMT fund. This is different from IGT, but it's unrestricted in terms of, and it's still part of the IGT program, it's just a separate component, and if you want to know any of the, if you want to geek out with the chief, you can explain a little more what the GEMT is. But in terms of its fund balance, it has about one point two million dollars. We've talked kind of internally, we don't want to rely too heavily on that because of the, it's a newer program, to really apply that to like fixed or ongoing costs, similar to like personnel costs or any like major operating costs. So, we feel, what our, what our approach is, is taking these two pots of money and creating a capital fund, which is, if you guys, if any in the council recalls, we had a capital fund called the one forty fund, we refer to it as the one forty fund, where we can move money into this fund and operate separately out of the general fund and use those for these capital expenses. One, what it does, it allows us to move that money in there, and it allows us to balance the general fund budget based on an operating and revenue expenditures, and then if there's any cushion, we use that for any other smaller type projects or just have a nice cushion in the general fund, because as we know, there's always, you know, there's always negotiations, there's other things that go on that are unanticipated expenses that happen throughout the budget year and not necessarily, we don't negotiate everything right with personnel right before the budget's approved. So, we have to have the ability to be flexible during those times when those contracts come up, and so, that will hopefully build us that buffer, that's the plan, when we start seeing these numbers come together. So, that would, that would generate about two point eight million dollars in addition, in funding available to the, these projects. On top of that, we still do have the five point six million in the fund reserve, in the reserve, and in the, in the fund balance and the general fund. If we balance the general fund budget this fiscal year, we will have five point six million dollars again, starting next year. So, the goal is, once we see what comes up with the two point eight, what additional funds do we need for these other projects that we have, that we can move more money out of the fund balance into this capital fund, and we can get a lot of these projects complete. I have been talking to staff and saying, "Hey, what are projects that we can get done?" You know, we talk about, we have the list that we went over last Saturday at the strategic planning effort, a lot of those are built into these costs, as well as there's other things that are just, some of them are just purchases. So, those are things that don't take a lot of time, we're not developing studies, we can normally get these ordered and done. But in the, you know, with, with the ambulances, they take six months, with the engine, it takes almost three years, so we need to be planning ahead for these things. And if we have the ability with the extra available cash to do these projects, I think it's definitely important that we take advantage of it now, and we put that money and set it aside for these, for these expenditures. So, with that, that's kind of the approach. Right now, it's looking like, you know, when we, when we look at the numbers preliminarily with the way we've been working it, it's looking close. I think that we're going to, we're definitely going to start refining it and looking at where it falls when we start developing up the projections further for personnel, but I think on our operations side, we're relatively dialed in on our operations, and I think my even kind of gave us our operation, it includes personnel, I think that's where that it's going to shift a little bit, is in the personnel side, once we kind of refine those numbers. But on operations, I think we've got it dialed in pretty well in terms of what our expectations are for operations. A lot of operational budgets went down because we extrapolated the one-time projects, because every year, there's little things that come up, or there's projects that we build, one year, you'll see a hundred thousand dollars in major machinery and equipment, the next year, you'll see fifty, and the next year, you'll see two hundred thousand, and sometimes you have to go back and find out, well, why was it fifty this year, why was it two hundred this year? And I want to make sure that we're able to adjust to that and address those as one-time projects, not necessarily as what their ongoing expenses. So, with that, I'm going to be quiet for a minute, let you guys digest that, and then I'll take any questions you guys have.
All right. Council?
I got one quick question. The excess that you're wanting to put into another account, is that going to be an interest account or just a basic account? Or are we able to?
I'm glad you mentioned that, because that made me think of something else that is not included in this proposal, but we are building that in as well. It will not, I don't, it won't be interest-bearing, however, my and I have been talking with some consultants who basically invest operating cash rather than just the typical, just regular investments with, with LEAF and some of these other smaller investments. They actually invest, and my may be able to explain a little bit more that, how that works, maybe we'll talk about that later on, but they, they actually invest operating cash, which if they're like, if there's a million, two sitting in the bank waiting for the engine, that money can be invested. And when, in talking to some of these firms, they are, when being able to invest in the operating cash, we're able to generate a lot of revenue, and there's some preliminary figures that have, they've been telling us, can't make promises, but it could be upwards of a million dollars a year in excess revenue, not necessarily just the general fund, because the full pot includes enterprise funds, general fund, IGT. So, it'll be broken out based on what's invested. But there is, and so, we don't have those numbers yet, so we haven't built those revenues into the budget yet, because we're going to have to go out for an RFP for those services, because unfortunately, we can't go out and sole source that, that, but we're going to do it as soon as possible, because we're losing that money, that revenue opportunity every day that we're not investing. But to answer your question, it will generate, it won't be in an interest-bearing account, but it will actually generate revenue, additional revenue by being in those funds.
So, you think we'll have that information like beginning of March or May?
Um, not sure, we're going to try, right now, we've been focused on budget, we're trying to put together an RFP to get that information out. We're hoping that we can have a consultant on board by the beginning of the fiscal year, so at least we can expect and project revenue for the entire fiscal year. So, and then identify how much.
Are we going to be able to get the budget all done and then bring this back and then adjust to be able to put that money into the other account?
It depends on how confident we are in the projections. I think we'll probably be competent enough where we can include those in the, in the actual budget, even if we're securing a contract almost around the same time. I think we'll be, I think we'll be comfortable enough, because we'll know kind of what our operating cash will be based on how the budget's approved, because even if we move this money, we're going to have cash flow to be able to invest.
Can you also find out what the cost is going to be for us to be able to utilize that? Because I know there's going to be a cost for somebody to...
Yes, it's built, it's built into that, yeah. So, we'll be able to explain that to you once we kind of get those proposals, because you guys will have to approve that contract, so we'll be bringing that back to the council eventually.
Thank you. So, we have this list of projects in front of us, and we're talking about including them into this year's budget, correct?
Yes.
So, do we plan on executing all of these projects this year, within the budget?
Probably not, and that's what we're still organizing. See, right now, my is compiling all the one-time projects, because it's by line and by line item, so these are kind of the highlighted. I think a lot of these bigger ticket items that PD and fire have, I think the majority of those can be done within the next fiscal year. Obviously, we will set aside money for the engine and put that into the capital fund, but it'll be restricted from being used, so we can make sure that we, we have that available in the next, I think it's like two and a half years, right? Before we can actually, before we buy it. So, it's like a lot of things, we can approve it tonight, but we may not spend it till September, which means it goes into next year's budget.
So, my worry is, is that things are going to go up in price, and that we're not going to be able to execute this stuff. And I think this is a great plan to move forward with all this. One idea that I've had is that, you know, we work with our budget that we have, and we take the rollover funds from the previous years, and we move them into a capital fund, similar to what you guys are talking about, but then we budget that fund separately so that it's budgeted at the time that it's being used, so that there's no, because if we do it this way, and then for some reason, prices, because they will, that will go up, then we won't be able to come back and say, "Okay, well, all of these items here, we're going to do," it's going to be, "Well, we need more money, because we can't do these items." Because that, you know, we, so like, if we were to take and say, "Okay, well, our general fund of eleven million, nine hundred and forty-nine, seven hundred is revenue, and our personnel is ten, six, three, one, two hundred." And I listened when you said that the reason that this number's a little bit lower is because we took out some of these one-time funds, the one-time projects that we could have used, but at least we're going to look at that and we're going to say, "Okay, well, you know, there's a, you know, there's another million dollars into there that'll probably roll over, if I'm doing this math correctly, maybe one point three." That will add on to the rollover that we already have of five point, what is it, five point six? Right, that puts us to, you know, what is it, six point, five point three plus six point three? It's going to be a significant amount that would roll over, and I think by doing that, then you could look at and say, you know, you move that all into a capital fund, move it all into the one forty fund, and then you say, "Hey, we want to budget all of these items out of that one forty fund, and then for some reason, if something doesn't get, if the prices go up on it, hey, this is the money we have in that capital fund, we haven't committed ourselves to, hey, we're going to do these projects that may or may not get done, because in the..." I would love to see them all get done this year, but I just think that it's an interesting practice to budget for something this year that we may not be able to get to this year. I don't like that practice. Not, and I, I always want, I mean, we have it in our, we have it in our code of conduct that we will balance the budget, so we want to make sure we do that. So, I don't want to see a negative, I don't want to see this deficit spending, and of course, you guys have been working really hard on this, so I'm not trying to tear down what you've done at all. And I think that you're on the right path of what you want to do, I would just like to see it done a little bit differently, so that on paper, as a council, we can look at it and say, "Okay, well, this year, we balanced the budget, and this is how much money is left rollover, this is how much money is left with the reserves, and then you put that rollover money into a one forty account, and then you say, 'Okay, well, this is our plan, we could do it at the same time as budget, this is the plan to spend this money.'" But then it gives the council and the public a really clear picture of, "Okay, well, we balanced the budget, and here's the one forty money that we have, and these are the projects that you're going to hit out of those, and then even if they take multiple years to get it done, it's not tied to our original budget." I don't like seeing that, because I don't want to see like, "Hey, we tied this to one budget, and then all of a sudden, prices go up, and now it's like, okay, well, when we do the audit, it's going to look, it's going to look like we overspent, and I don't want to look like we've overspent, I want to look like that we nailed it." And I know this is really hard to be able to project on revenue and expenses side, and I think you guys are doing a great job. I would just like to see it a little bit more refined, so that from a public's point of view, they can follow it, and from a council's point of view, that we can follow it, because I know that some of us up here are business, like, I think all of us have been business owners at one point in time, and it's really easy for us to follow a budget of a starting number, ending number, and this is what our budget, this is what we started with, this is what we ended with, and we nailed it, and we're good, and if we have extra, that's perfect, but I'd like to see us roll over that money to the one forty fund, and then any extra, we just make a policy that we roll it over into that one forty fund, that way that regardless, and then, yeah, you're right, we have used the one forty fund in the past to balance the budget, let's hope we don't ever have to do that, but if we do, at least we'd have that, plus we'd have the reserves, and if you want to move money from the reserves into that one forty fund, or you want to spend some of these one-time projects and out of the reserve fund, it keeps our general budget straight, and we don't have to worry about that. And that's what, I'm really just worried about the public's perception of how this comes out, because there are some people that are going to look at this with a fine-toothed comb, there'll be unions that are going to look at this with a fine-toothed comb, there's going to be people that are going to be looking at measure J with a fine-toothed comb, saying, "Hey, where's your guys' money, have you guys been good stewards with it?" And I just want to be able to say, "Hey, look, we separated this out so the public could see everything." And I think you guys are on a great track of doing that, and this is only one person's point of view, but it's what I would kind of like to see, and then it also gives you the ability to where like, you've put these ideas here, you've put the one forty account here, and then it's easier for us to swallow when you say, "Okay, well, these are the projects we want to do, this one went up two hundred thousand dollars." So, I would say the ones that you can nail this year, put them in this year's budget, and the rest of them, move that money to the one forty fund, and let's start working on them as quickly as we can, but that way that we have them separated out and it doesn't come back looking in the audit like, "Is we overspent or we deficit spending?" That's just my suggestion. Sorry, I know that's a lot to take in, but I've been thinking about this for a while, and I've been, I've been talking with you guys about this too, like, like, what can we do? And you guys are like on a great path, I just want to make sure that like we separate it out so that everyone can understand it.
Yeah, I think you're, you're spot on in terms of how we're going to make sure that the, the general fund budget balances and will operate projects, yeah, so the projects right now are all built into the general fund, but we, when we did our budget prep, we identified them either operating costs or project, one-time projects. But we, when we did our budget prep, we identified them either operating costs or project, one-time projects. So when we see that, we'll be able to provide you that list at the next meeting. And you'll be able to see all the one-time projects. We'll identify all those projects. And if we can fund all of those, those will be budgeted, they'll be actually pulled out of their corresponding fund, out of the general fund into the 140 fund. And they'll all be operated out of there as projects. And they'll be removed from the general fund expenses, which then in turn, if you remove this, like say this 4.4 million and if these were actual numbers that were going to be finalized, you would have a surplus of about, you know, close to, uh, you know, uh, five, $500,000.
Okay.
But it's just a matter of based on this 4.4 million in one-time projects currently. If we do everything, we would take the 2.8 between these reserve fund and the GMT and then we'd have to take additional out of the fun, out of the fund balance, move that money into the 140. I think it's still good to have a cushion in the fund balance every year moving forward. So we should have some type of carryover.
Sure.
And then like I said, even have a cushion in the revenue to expense side, hopefully, where there is that flexibility when we do have negotiations and other things that come up throughout the year. But there will be definitely a different approach to the budget. The, but as you saw in the mid-year budget, that's how we're going to be kind of addressing the budget and the mid-year next year in terms of budget adjustments. Our goal is to spend within what's budgeted. Anytime there's expenditures outside the, the approved budget, it'll come back as a budget adjustment. So you guys will know if it's something that goes beyond what's in the budget. And that's going to be something that I'm going to be more of a steward of as well as Maya is and to holding everyone accountable to make sure that if, hey, we got to start thinking further ahead in terms of what we need for the year, especially when we have these capital funds and we can take care of these projects. But there are things that come up that'll happen, but we'll be able to come back and those will be specific approved budget adjustments by the council.
Okay. And then I guess the only other item, this is a time to also express needs for the budget, correct?
Yes, if you guys have anything else that you guys are, that you guys have that we haven't really addressed or I can tell you it's in the list, I just didn't mention it. There are a lot of other items on the list that aren't necessarily mentioned tonight.
We're going to segue right into this. Go ahead.
Do you want to the airport?
Yeah, it's already in there. Yeah, that's in the airport budget.
Are we looking at adding some money to the airport budget to moving forward for air show?
I did, so in the budget for the air show, what I did is just because I don't know how much it's going to cost yet because we're still trying to finalize performers. I put $50,000 in the airport budget, but I also put $50,000 in revenue as reimbursement. So when we start going out and trying to find sponsors, it'll help recoup those costs. So it is right now a zero, uh, zero cost to the city in terms of the air show. And then for those costs, we have increased a little bit of the maintenance costs at the airport as well. I'd have to look and see what else we added specifically on the airport. But we did include, uh, allow it, you know, we did include some funding for the air show. And so hopefully, and then the goal is, is to recoup those funds through sponsorships and other, and ticket sales or whatever, other, um, revenues we have from that, uh, particular event.
Right. Yeah, that and, and the fact that once we have fuel and other things are fixed, they're going to have to be maintained. So that's going to require more manpower.
Yep. Yeah.
And are we going to make sure we go after the matching funds that are available?
Yes, there's a little bit of, uh, there's grant funds in there, uh, not necessarily the large sum. Those are still things I'm kind of looking into. I was just actually just talking to our grant writers last week about the different grant opportunities as well as the matching grants that are available. So we need to see how much those matching grants are because I think they're a 50% match. We need to make sure that we're able to build those, those funds into the, uh, into the budget as well, depending on the cost of those, um, matching funds. So we're still trying to refine that as well with the airport.
I know I've, I've been seeing the police vehicles in the shop a lot. Is there a plan to get another one, another vehicle that's up, fall under that?
Which, which vehicle?
A police vehicle?
Well, there's four vehicles proposed in the budget.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, I'll, I'll get you guys a list next time. We were hoping to have it tonight, but unfortunately there's just a lot of numbers.
All right. I just have a couple of items. I'd just like to have staff look over the, um, the, the council travel and training. And if we need to make adjustments, uh, look at how close each person is. And in also, um, you know, we may not directly have to include the one voice trip because that's probably not something that we'll do every single time. But at least understanding where the, uh, training is, uh, for council and, and whatnot.
And then we actually, I think we adjusted it to 6,000 per council member in this budget.
Okay.
Yeah.
So just make, being aware of that. And then also, um, there was a, a bill that passed a couple of years ago and I think we did make a move on it, which is towards, uh, increasing the, the stipends for council members. And I want to make sure that we, uh, take that into consideration as well. There's a, um, from the last time that we did it, I think it was 2022. Uh, there's a specific, uh, number that can be done, uh, so that we can move up to that. And so if staff could just look, just look into that as well.
Yep.
And take that into consideration. And then also, uh, let's, uh, I would like to, um, uh, take the city treasurer, um, and the planning commission, and I'd like to think of some creative ways that, that we can move their stipends up as well. Things have, uh, cost, you know, more and I think they do a great job. And so I'd like to look at that. And then I know that the city is already working on this kind of stuff and, and not to, uh, you know, I just want to remind that I know, uh, training for staff is important and we just want to make sure that, that all of that is taken into consideration as well. And that's all I have.
Um, I just got one more. I, I would like to, um, imply something for the animal control training. See if we could send him to, uh, some of the proper training, uh, some of the laws, anything that he could, uh, deal with out in the public, that he would be able to have enough training to, um, address when he's on in public and any equipment that he would, we need.
Oh, and then there was a couple of items that we did bring up at the, um, that I just want to make sure that we, that we talk about, which is one was the, um, the relationship with the paper. What we could do with the paper in order to make sure, uh, that, that, that we're making, um, progress on meeting those goals. And then also, um, uh, including the chamber of commerce in that as well. What we could do to, uh, strengthen, uh, the chamber connection with the city and utilize, uh, that kind of capacity. Because I know it is hard to, to grow capacity at the city. And sometimes it's, it's cheaper to utilize our partners. We need clear defined goals on how to do that and what we would do. So, uh, and I, I, I'm very aware that you have a lot of stuff on your plate, but I think this was stuff that we, we did discuss at that meeting, so. Anyone else have anything else? No? Okay. Not yet. All right. So I think this was a, just, um, this was a discussion, um, but more like, you don't need to vote on this, right? Just kind of direction.
No, just kind of direction. Just wanted to kind of give you guys an update and we'll have hopefully a lot more detail at the next meeting. Just real quick, I could, I can, we're going to do, uh, we would like to do a special budget workshop on the 23rd of April. Because we have some, um, issues with our April fir, I think it's the April, what was the meeting that we're? Yeah, but let's see that. The 17th was going to be too quick of a turnaround to try to bring back all this information. But if we can do a budget workshop on the 23rd, that'll give us a little more time to kind of refine all the numbers. Because we want to refine the personnel, we want to create the capital fund and those transfers and see what, show you how that'll look. And then basically come back with all the other funds too at that meeting. So if you're good at, uh, six o'clock on the 23rd.
Everyone okay with that?
April, April 23rd?
So, um, let me ask the city attorney. Okay, what, what are the, uh, new requirements since they have changed the, they keep changing things? So like the requirements to be able to zoom, are people allowed to do that still?
Um, they're, they're still considering that, so, um, still the old rules still apply. So if you want to zoom, you have to post. There is a bill, I know that they're trying to push through that you wouldn't have to do that to kind of modernize, but I don't believe that's been passed yet.
Okay.
But I know they're talking about it.
So do we have the ability for, I, I, I would like it if our whole council could, could, um, make sure that we attend it. So if, if it won't work that day, we can move it to a different day.
I would suggest moving it to a different day. That way all five of us, because there's going to be two of us gone.
Okay.
Well, we can, we can try and coordinate with you guys and try to find another date. I think as we kind of get further in the refinement of the budget, we'll kind of better idea how, how more urgent it gets to have more meetings rather than if everything's looking pretty clean in terms of the budget, we may not be able, we may not have to have a lot of discussion. Because May 8th is another special meeting that we're requesting. Because May, May 1st, we're actually, uh, myself and Nathan and who else is going to One Voice? We're coming back on Thursday, Roger and Manny. We'll be coming back on the first, so we won't be able to have that meeting on, uh, May 1st.
Okay. So, uh, is it, is the direction to have, uh, staff work with council to find, uh, a good date for the budget workshop? You okay with that? Okay. All right. That being said, we're going to move on to item number, uh, 6.2. Discussion, direction, potential action regarding increasing presence of the Kalanga Fire Department at the Kalanga Airport, future agenda item, Hedge Cock and Schindler.
Do you guys want to start with that?
It was brought up to me by the fire department, how they needed some expansion room. And I believe the airport is a ideal spot for that to happen because it could also bring in more revenue with, uh, business out there if we have fire presence. And I believe Greg's working on a proposal.
Yes and no. Uh, yeah, it, many options were discussed about the best location for a second fire station. The best thing to do would be a feasibility study to make sure that we're doing it correctly. We're full transparency, we're doing it right, we're making sure we're meeting our, um, response areas and stuff like that. And so, um, I had battalion chief Long just kind of start the process and kind of see where we're at. Because if it, if it didn't make sense and we weren't going to be able to meet any of those requirements, then I didn't want to proceed any further, right? And so he came back to me and said, you know what? It actually might be an okay place. I think there are two other better locations, but this one might work. And I said, perfect, that's all I need to know. And then I can address it with the city manager and we can go from there. So that's kind of where we're at right now.
Yeah, so tonight, uh, we just want to get concurrence from the council to have staff start working on, um, kind of a feasibility analysis. Look at the, the kind of pros and cons to that area, whether it be a temporary facility, you know, for now. But also, and, and also look at the alternatives and what other locations. But, um, but we just want to make sure that you guys are comfortable with us moving forward with using some staff time to do the analysis. Like, uh, the chief said, you know, we want to make sure we can meet response times. If we have personnel housed out there, we're further out of town. So we want to make sure, or what other types of personnel can be located out there? Because I know we're trying to expand our ambulance services and everything else. There may be some other opportunities there too. So we can definitely look at all those options and then bring back for further discussion with the council if you guys, um, are interested in that and okay with that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm interested.
Is there any further direction, uh, any further direction that you guys would like to give? Or is this, uh, what they said, is that fine?
No, that sounds good.
So the direction is a feasibility study, is that correct?
Okay.
Thank you.
Can you, can you also check a little bit on what it would take to expand a little bit of the property? So we can do a little bit more, make it easier on us?
Uh, we could, we could see, we could look and see based on what their availability is, what they would need if there's additional land that they would need based on, um, what the footprint would look like. Because I know there's been some interest in Skylife and als, as well as Cal Fire. So what are all those, you know, complementary features that might be able to be as part of this effort? So we can definitely look at that and that may in turn require additional land, um, space and see what lands available that can be used because I know some of it's restricted by habitat. But then we also have some that's been leased out as farmland. So there might be some ability in those areas as well. So we can definitely look at that too.
All right. Everyone okay with that? All right, perfect. Do you have direction on that?
Thank you.
All right. So we're going to, I, move on to item number, uh, 7.1 announcements, city manager's announcements.
Actually, I just have one, because we were talking about all these special meetings, that we do have, our next meeting is on, uh, April 17th. So we would do have that meeting.
7-2, council members announcements and reports.
I just got, uh, some announcement, uh, with, uh, um, all the events happening, uh, park, uh, the parking wreck. Also, there'll be a car wash for my sister's family, for the family, uh, it'll be a car wash. If, uh, you guys could spread it out there for, you know, bring your car in, you know, for the donations of the family.
Perfect. City treasurer?
I just asked that I be included in any financial meetings and get the information on the dates and time. So I may attend, please.
Sure.
Perfect. And number 7-3 is mayor's announcements. I did, uh, last week went to Burbank for the California League of Cities, sitting on the transportation committee. And, uh, we had a bunch of items in front of us. It looks like CARB is trying to move forward with, uh, um, with their fleet program. They've taken quite a bit out, but some of the things that are concerns is that they want zero emission fleets for things like, uh, garbage trucks and things like that that are from public agencies. Currently, you know, we're outsourcing that, so I don't see that that affects us directly. But, um, um, it's on, it's on the radar, of course. And then there was, uh, uh, I, I don't remember the name of the, the senator or assembly person that wanted a $20 billion bond. And they took it to the transportation committee and asked us, and we spent like an hour talking about it. And, uh, the chair said that this is the first time in history that, uh, that the committee did not want the money. The committee said, no, because you guys don't do well with bonds. And we figured that if you put a bond on there, then that will tank the rest of the measures down the line because people do not trust the state and they would rather trust their localities. And so measure C was mentioned, uh, and, and a lot of other like local taxes were mentioned and they didn't want the state being the catalyst, uh, to say no to everything down the line. So, uh, we successfully tanked that. Probably not a good way to say it, but, uh, that was the outcome of that meeting. And so, um, but I will be attending the autism awareness walk. That will be on, um, I think it's, uh, Saturday from 1:00 to 3:00.
1:00 to 3:00, yeah.
Correct? Yeah. So I'll be attending that. And, uh, with that being said, we're going to move on to, um, item number eight, future agenda items. I don't have any.
I got a couple. The rest I'll, the rest I'll bring in later. On the corner of Hawthorne and Sixth Street, is there a way that we can do a study about getting a stop sign right there on Hawthorne? Facing to the south? It's an odd street right there. It's like a W and it's, it's really dangerous. So the CH, the CHP has actually been parked there, uh, a few times a week now to kind of keep control. People are speeding through there and causing accidents, so. Then another one, can we get a, uh, the cost savings since we've hired the new mechanic for roughly close to, close to a year now on how much it's actually saved us by doing that in-house?
Yeah, it's actually already in the works. I've been working with staff on that already because we're trying to see if we can get enough information where we can include that potentially in the budget. But right now we just haven't, we haven't been able to get that, those numbers yet, but they are, they have been working on it.
Can you also check in what it would cost to bring in a lube tech? That way the mechanic does mechanic work and not lube work?
That would have been the, that would have been the second position.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Anyone else? I just have one. If we could get, uh, some information out to the public, actually I have two. Information to the public on tinted windows. I see a large mem, uh, group of the public that, uh, doesn't quite understand the rules behind that with the state. And so if we could get that information put out, circulated to the paper, put it on our social media, that way the public is aware, uh, the rules with that. And then, um, the second would be, uh, just an update on the smart meters, uh, for the smart water meters. When we could expect them, how many we're getting and, uh, kind of like timeline beyond with that.
Okay, I'll get a little more detail for you next meeting.
All right.
I'd like to add to your window thing. Is there a possible way, Sean, that you can get a cost of what it would take to get a few of the officers certified to be able to do that? So that way it's across all shifts if it ever comes to question again?
As far as a tint meter?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? No? Seeing none, we're going to. Seeing none, we're gonna move on to closed session. We have, uh, two items. Public employment, government code, section five four nine five seven, title city manager. And then, uh, real property negotiations, government code five four nine five six dot eight. And this looks like it's properties, uh, APNs number zero seven one, one five two, zero four S. City negotiators are gonna be interim city manager Sean Brewer and city attorney, uh, Mario Zamora. Negotiating parties are Larry L. Baker and Lori, uh, L. Baker, under negotiation, pricing terms. With that, do we expect to be reporting anything out?
We do not.
We do not. Meeting adjourned.